Thanks, Chef.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Welcome to staff meeting Tuesday, April the 8th. Got a full docket today, really. Wonderful things we're going to be talking about. So manager still take it away.
Two items, Chairman. We'll start off with a discussion just to give the community an update on kind of where the county is at with admin building process. And then after that, we have several representatives from the start community here today talk about including some staff and some citizens. We'll do that second. So Tanya will start us up on. Give us a review of admin very quickly.
Good morning. I'm here this morning to give you an update on the county administration building. So. I will start off with my first slide. This is something that you were told you see. Have they shown us since 2017? And the reason for showing the slide is really why are we? Why have we not included the county administration building? And so it started in 2017 with really the need for district court, sheriff. And so we didn't space that in 2017.
And District Court needed space to the tune of an additional 30,000 square feet. DA needed an additional square feet of 15,000 square feet. And the sheriff needed an additional 2,000 square feet. So in total. Public safety needs were a total of 47,000 square feet in all. So that's really the what started the need for the county admin needing space. So we satisfied that need, I would say temporarily with a 2019 CIP project. And that included moving. The sheriff out of the courthouse and we moved them into the adult detention facility. By repurposing some space on the first floor and then building a two story expansion of 7,100 square feet. And then what we also did was we moved out sheriff out of that second and third floor space in the county courthouse. And we redid, we basically did a schematic design for second and third floor. Should there ever be that future opportunity for space on that second and third floor by moving out those admin offices? So total project budget for that was 6.4 million. So again, we moved out sheriff, moved them out of the courthouse into that expansion at the jail. And then moved DA, we moved some of the function of DA into the west wing of the second and third floor. So that was basically a temporary space relief for that. Then we had some good news with ARPA funding. And that was a court backlog ARPA project. And so. That opportunity basically gave us funding of 9.3 million. To allow for additional courtrooms on the seventh floor, two additional courtrooms on the eighth floor. An additional courtroom on the ninth floor, appellate space on the 11th floor. And then what we were able to do was basically make into fruition. The entire second floor and the entire third floor for DA space. So we had to move out on the second floor, we moved out register of deeds and clerk. And then we moved out on the third floor, we moved out the commission, the manager and the county councilor's office. And what that did again was we took out the DA out of the entire annex and moved them into the second and third floor. And then also on on the first floor, we made a traffic courtroom on the first floor and we use that funding out of the COVID response. To the tune of 1.17 million dollars. So all of that is done, that has all been completed. So all those courtrooms are up and running on seventh, eighth and ninth. And as well as the appellate space on the 11th floor. And the DA is fully moved into the second and third floor. So they are completely out of the annex. Okay, so again, that's, that's the whole reason for the admin building and. The admin services basically, which includes finance, county clerk. County councilor's office, county manager, strategic planning, commission, treasurer and register of deeds. They all moved into our current home now, the roughen building. And then human resources, they moved over a year later in June of 2023. So currently, as it sits right now, we are in the roughen building that lease ends June 30th of 2028. And we did write into that lease an early termination with no penalty on June 30th of 2027 with a 90 day written notice. I'm going to hand the slide over to Lindsay. She's going to speak to a few pieces of that.
So commissioners, as you know, we've had lots of conversations about this over the last several years, as Tanya has discussed. And so just. It's on you just, do I need to speak louder? How's this? Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. So yes, over the last few years, we've talked a lot about these projects. The the dollar amount for an admin building has varied greatly over time. Last year, right about this time, for those of you who are here, you will recall that we knew that at the end of 2024. We had to have a plan in place for how we were going to spend ARPA dollars through 2026. Now, obviously, later in that year, with a presidential administration change and concerns about funding. You all did decide to escalate that, but at this time last year, we did not know that was going to be the case. And so we were talking about what we ought to do in terms of a lease extension with this building. In order to make plans, whether we would stay here long term. Or whether the commission was interested in identifying a permanent building. And so at the time, through multiple discussions, the commission determined that yes, we wanted to commit to a long term solution. Either buy and remodel or construct new. And so what we did was we went through a process to issue bonds. Now typically, as we've talked about, we would wait until a project is done. And we would wait until we knew what those exact costs were going to be, and we would reimburse ourselves for those actual costs. But at this time last year, we knew that this project was slated to be around 27 to 28 million dollars. We had the juvenile community based service building of 22 million that was sitting out there. Regional forensic science center was still something that was pending. And of course, comcare crisis, we knew was going to come in greater than planned. The in the 15 million that we had already included in our bond funding. So to try and address that, because we did think that there would be some immediate action taken. We brought a project authorization to this commission in July, which was approved that basically authorized us to start moving forward. With doing a bond sale. So we actually sold bonds on October 2nd. Those were tax exempt bonds, which again, doesn't mean that their property tax exempt. It means that whoever buys our bonds doesn't have to pay any interest. When they receive the interest from us, they don't have to pay income tax on that. So it's a great way to market our bonds, especially when we're triple A. So we were able to do that. We only sold about half of the total project cost. Because we just needed about that much to make sure that we could get through. All of the other bond processes and all the other timelines so that our general fund would have enough cash to cover those. So we sold 13.9 million. Now, per bond rules. We have 36 months from the date of the sale. So October 2nd, 2024. We have 36 months to spend 85% of those bond proceeds. So the 13.9 million only. We also know that we must spend 100% within five years of that date. So that puts us at that October 2029 date that you'll see on this slide. And finally, at the end of last year, because we did have excess investment income and because of the actions the commission took to end ARPA early. We were able to do some revenue replacement. And so we were able to transfer some funding to our CIP fund. Some of that has already been earmarked toward comcare. And the crisis center so that we don't actually have to issue any more bonds than we already originally planned for. But the remainder is 9.7 million. That has not been allocated to anything specific. It certainly could be used for an admin building if that was this commission's decision in order to not issue the full amount of bonds that we had originally planned. So that is the pot of funding that we currently have today. That I would tell you, obviously, the 13.9 million must be used for an admin building. But the 9.7 million could potentially be available to you as well.
Okay, so this is also an old slide. This is basically our programming for the county admin building. In total, and I'll get to that next slide, is about 76,000 square feet that we need for gross area. But this breaks down by department, what we need for square footage. On the left side is the current square footage per department that they are currently in. And then the the number to the right is the program space. The change that you'll see on this is in red, I've taken out records management. We know that records management is going to go into the elections space on Cometera. I think that the commission has provided me with direction that that is okay to move records management into that space. So I've taken them off of this programming need. And so therefore, as I mentioned. So total admin building tenant area is now 55,883 square feet. And so gross area that we need for county admin space is 76,559 square feet. So difference between that is we're adding in 37% of circulation space and that includes mechanical room. Stairs, elevators, public corridors and restrooms. Okay, so what I'm getting into here is just what we have looked at for previous buildings. As we've been in our search for several years for an admin building. I can tell you that we've looked probably close to maybe 30 buildings in in my time of looking for an admin building space. What I've listed here are buildings that we have looked at and given it due diligence. And that is even to the extent in some of these cases gone as far as having an architect looked at these and giving building assessments. So I've listed some here, 150 North Main, we looked at that in 2019, excuse me, 2018. Yander Mountain in 2018, Riverview Building, 2018. We looked at the Murphin Plaza Building and that includes three buildings. In 2018, we talked a lot about the courthouse complex expansion from 2018 to 2021. We looked at the Riverside Hospital in 2021 and then most recently in 2023 at the Murphin Plaza Building. And that was two buildings. What I bring up now is a current building that we are looking at, and that's the Envision Building. We started that look in 2024 and we're, as I mentioned, we're currently looking at that building. That's at 610 North Main that has 73,000 square feet. And we're also looking at a vacant lot to the east there that is owned by the Envision Building for parking spaces. Envision Building, or excuse me, Envision owners are currently looking at consolidating their programs and services and warehouse all in one. At a location campus on Water Street. So because of that, that opens up this current building at 610 North Main. So what that gives us right now for admin building options is what I just mentioned, the Envision Building at 610 North Main. And then what we have been talking about, I think since 2018, is the new construction build at Third and Main. At 76,000, just it would be the space that we would exactly need because we would be building nudes. So 76,559 square feet. And then I always close with this. This is something that we, I believe we did this in 2018. As we got stakeholder input from the departments that would be moving into the admin building. What they wanted was convenience to the public, collaboration between departments, function and efficiency and security and safety. Those were the priorities for our county admin building. And that is my briefing.
Okay, Tanya, thank you. A lot of history. It predates some of us here on the commission. So. All right, commissioners, any questions or comments? Mr. Blue Boss.
I just wanted to throw out there, you know, on the stakeholder input, did we look at future consolidation opportunities as one of the? Potential decision factors?
You look like you want to speak.
Not really, sir. These. The criteria that Tanya put up is how many years old? Six, seven years old? And we did not have near the discussion back in that time period that we're currently having today. So not really, no.
Other questions? Mr. Sheriff.
Just want to make, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to make a comment. And I think this building is is. Its location is very interesting. In terms of trying to find the right building for Sedgwick County, everyone wants to talk about being close to other parts of government. This building is right across the street from a current comcare, which I'm sure we'll find a future use for. It's next door to the emergency management building, 911 dispatch building. It's right across the street from Arch Valley Lodge. It's across, it's across street from the county courthouse as well as. Next to the historic county courthouse. It's next to next to the Munger Building and across the street from the parking garage that we currently use. So in terms of being co-located next to other parts of our government, again, it's also not just a very close to, if you will, to the city hall. So in terms of trying to find a good building that's got the right. Size and a good location, I think this building is is a really good choice.
I would also say, obviously, when you heard that the mayor of Wichita had mentioned moving in the city hall. She'd also mentioned us moving over to the old library. These are just discussions throwing out to the ecosystem, hey, but there's a need here, there are options available. I think the community needs that discussion and many options. And and I think it was important that you referenced that, you know. Over several years, it looked over 30 buildings. Like this has been a lot of due diligence, a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of money. Has been put into this, which is why I think it's prudent upon us to get some decisions made and finally get the county across this finish line. Mr. Meister.
And I just add that, just going back in history for. Those that are not around, we also looked at a lot of buildings that were outside the core of downtown. That maybe had a lot of attraction to do that, but that would have been locating. Us on the outs of, on the outskirts of the city, great buildings, a lot of them. But I think we made a decision that based on input that that we we need to stay in the core of the city. So those are some of these 30 buildings we've been looking at, not not that many, but if. So we did make a decision unless there was another. Feeling to to change that direction, but that's what we made back before a few of these commissioners were elected. Jim, you were with us when we decided to stay.
Yeah, Tanya, could you give some clarity too for the public that we are leasing this building? What is the annual lease payment that we make here?
Oh, my guess is about. Lindsay, you want to help me on that? Because I'm going to say 900,000.
It's it's almost that. When you start factoring in the the parking spaces and other things, yes.
I think that's the determining factor that I want the public to understand is that we're using property tax dollars to lease a property right now. And these are ARPA dollars right now, but these ARPA dollars are going to run out. But we are, we are leasing this property and. There's been a sentiment from the commission, the majority of the commission, that we want the taxpayer should own its asset. The other thing that's out there now is this expediency with, we need to get 85% of our project or these funds from the bond sale expended within three years. So. There's some time pressures here. There's an urge to want to get this across the finish line. So. I do have questions, Lindsay. I don't know if we can do this here, but some of the discussions, if you maybe could email the commission, especially our new commissioners on debt policy. We have policy in regards to what we can and cannot do with debt. And I want the public to be aware at some point in time, we can do this in a BOCC meeting, or if you know it off the top of your head, you're welcome to do it now. But this is, we have some debt falling off. And this would be based on everything you've advised us that the stewardship of our debt policy is still very well maintained.
Absolutely. So I'm happy to speak to that. The commission last April did approve a variety of new policies that pertain to debt. And those were all based on our municipal advisor and our bond council advising us on how to best maintain a triple A credit rating. And so the policy now focuses on ensuring that our debt is that we have enough liquidity, that we can always cover our bills, even with any debt that we're considering, that we always have cash flow. And also that we are maintaining a certain level of debt relative to our, the total value of our community. And so we actually are going to have some project authorizations on your meeting agenda next week related to some projects that have already been approved. We're in a position now where we need to start talking about reimbursing ourselves for those costs. So we'll outline those specific measures and we'll give you an update after we have the 2024 audit. But again, I also want to reiterate. That we have state law limits and we are well below 10% of what we're able to have under state law. And that's something that we're very proud of. And it's something that you all are allotted for each time we get a credit rating analysis. In terms of what debt is falling off, we do have about $3 million that we're paying annually for NCAT through 2028. That then becomes funding that's available in 2029. One of the things that we learned after the community conversation in 2008. About expanding the jail and also doing the NCAT construction was that folks do not respond well. When it appears that you're doing a tax increase to fund bonds. And so what we have endeavored to do ever since then is make sure that we are keeping a stable amount of debt over time. And that as that debt does fall off, that we plan to replace that responsibly. Over time so that there aren't any shocks to the community system or to the county's budget as those things come on. So that's the most significant debt that's falling off. You also have some spirit debt that will be falling off and some refundings that we did in the juvenile complex. So Commissioner Beatty had asked during your retreat about what our proper level of debt is. When we come to you in May, next month, to talk about our proposed CIP, we'll have some target information for you at that time, based on what we're presenting to you then.
That's good. Okay, Lindsay, that's helpful. Excited for that conversation. I do want to acknowledge. The Envision Building was mentioned today. We do have people from Envision here, Michael Monofronte representing Envision. And I'd like, if it's okay, Michael, if you're open to it, the public and you have a lot of clients that are hearing that. And I know Tanya made a comment that there'll be a consolidation of your services, but I think it might be appropriate, Michael, if you'd want to. Give a little detail as to what Envision's plans might be if this moves forward. I think many of your clients might appreciate that. So you're welcome to come up to the podium if you'd like, Michael. You do a lot of great services in this community, so.
Yes, he does.
Ladies and gentlemen, Andrew Crane.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, for the opportunity to share a little bit about from the discussion that you're all having here today. Yes, as Envision is looking forward to our future and evolution, we're looking at absolutely a maximization and utilization of space. We also share the affinity for our downtown Wichita. We have a manufacturing complex, eight and a half acres on Southwater. In addition to the 73,000 square foot facility here that houses our mission and foundation services. And so our goal would be to construct a new early child development center, construct a new rehabilitation clinic with the latest. Tools and ability to serve people who are blind and visually impaired. In addition to our research institute and very importantly, our workforce innovation center. So if we can combine all of those into one campus on Southwater with our manufacturing, it makes it more convenient and maximizes our utilization of space. So. Looking forward to the opportunity as this progresses to continue a discussion with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's helpful to understand for the community what your guys' future may look like. And again, thank you for all the work that you do in this community. We appreciate you guys greatly.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Hey, commissioners, any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just wanted to respond, just for a moment to Commissioner Blue Boss's question. I've been here a decade and we've, we've talked about that idea of. Being county function in the city hall. I mean, it's been a discussion going on probably before I was even here. It's not a bad idea. The idea of consolidation. The basic idea is that we would merge governments. We have essentially. Less, if you will, people administrating the governments because you've combined them, there's an efficiency there. I don't think that's what people, even even the mayor, I don't think that's what she envisioned when she spoke about, you know, welcoming. Sedgwick County into city hall. And the extended discussion of that was to clear out. Three floors or so of the city hall and relocate those folks to the library. And then welcome Sedgwick County into and into the city hall building. And as good as that sounds, I would just say that's actually co-location. That's not really consolidation. Co-location is possibly more convenient for people visiting city and county at the same time. But there's not necessarily any cost savings. So what am I, and I don't know, I don't think we have any estimates. I'm just going to throw out some numbers here, but. There's been people who have opined that to displace those folks out of the city hall. And prepare space for them, maybe 25 million dollars or who knows what it'd be. There's a cost there. Whatever the cost is going to be would be borne by the county presumably because we're causing the action. And we'd have to prepare the space in city hall. That's another remodel. And so. At the end of the day, I presume this actually could be a more expensive option. For the taxpayers. And so again, if we were truly combining. Governments in some way, and I think there's, there are, there are opportunities for functional consolidation. And I think we have a long list of those. I've been, again, I've been working on this topic for 10 years. There's a lot of things we could do to to make some efficiencies and streamline government. But to, you know, as a wholesale combination of Sedgwick County and city Wichita. Would really require more on their part to move towards the county for lots of reasons. And I don't know that the city is willing to give up, if you will. City, city government, and if you will, replace the city government with Sedgwick County government. I don't think they're interested in that. And the opposite of that, I think, is unconstitutional. So at the end of the day, co-location is really what's been discussed recently. And I actually think if you, if you consider the, what that actually means, I think that's probably even a higher cost possibly than the discussions we're having today. So. In terms of, you know, trying to to provide the spaces our, our employees need to provide services. I think we've been very judicious trying to find the right location. For the best cost for the taxpayer. I think what we're talking about today is is in that direction. So I don't want to throw a wrench in the, in the, in the discussion today. And back up, you know, we've been working on this for a decade, let's just say. And if we start the process over by rethinking again, which direction we're heading. That I think will probably fall flat once again, and maybe we'll not get anywhere and we'll. Again, we'll look back a couple of years from now and we'll be back where we are today. So. I would rather, you know, not to get too serious about slowing the process down. For something that really doesn't, I think anecdotally, you could almost say there's a lot of cost there. And I'm not sure that's actually more efficient for and more efficient. Type of government necessarily. And this actually is emerging a function. Considering county, I don't think that anyone's actually talking about that, that part of this. So. I appreciate the question. I do think we need to answer that question. But I don't know that, and I'm not trying to be. You know, prejudge the merits of the idea. But I just want to say this idea has been around a long time. This is not something new. Thank you so much.
Mr. Howard, just want to make sure you understood me. My statement was, are we taking into consideration future consolidation opportunities? It was not a statement to overall consolidate government. It was, is there an opportunity to work together, eliminate waste? To go ahead and test some of these theories to see whether there really is a cost savings. But my question, I want to know, how have we engaged the public with this conversation? Have you guys went out to your cabs? Have, what public discussions have we had about this? I mean, I realize it's an admin job or an admin building. It's not necessarily. You know, who are the users of this and how have we, what conversations have we had?
I'll let Tanya chime in too, but I can't recall. How many public discussions we've had on admin building. As Commissioner House said, we've talked about this greater than, it proceeds to managers in front of me that have talked about this. We've had numerous discussions on all of the buildings that Tanya listed. We had public discussion either in BOCC meetings or in staff. Some of them we dove very deeply into, spent several weeks and time and money to to see if it. Would fit the need of what the county was wanting. We do, and we talk about it every year in budget. So. I think we've engaged the community or at least put out in open meeting a number of times what it is that the county is considering. But as far as a town hall meeting that dealt with admin building or specifically this, I don't recall that we've done any. And I think that there's going to be opportunity as we come down to the final options. What it is that the commission has to do now that we have the timeline of this, of this budget or of the bond sale hanging over us. I think that there's going to be opportunity to do that.
I think the only thing I might add on to what the manager mentioned was, and I, I'll be honest with you, I cannot remember what year it was, but there was a, there was a point where there was. Two choices and we asked for public input. And they were able to provide that public input on, do they want this, this building or this building? And we, we put that out to the community and they were able to provide that input to us. I want to say it was maybe around 2018, 2019 that we did that.
Could we share some of that to the public so that they know that we have vetted this?
Sure, we'd be glad to.
And I think that just decision making in total is probably going to be at our best benefit. I, I know that we've talked about it for years and years, but I feel. I, I know that we've talked about it for years and years, but I feel like we're at a position now that we need to be making decisions sooner than later. As a new commissioner coming in, I have not walked Envision. I haven't walked through the city hall to know if that's even something that I would agree with or consider. I, I like Jim's, Commissioner Howes' note on, you know, that's just co-locating. And unless we're really combining a service or there's a benefit there, that that's a really good thing to, to be thinking of. To Commissioner Bluebaugh's statement is, are we looking at shared services? If we're really looking at consolidating in services with the city of Wichita or anybody in the other city, does that lower the footprint need from 76 or 73,000 square feet to something different? And I think that's where Commissioner Bluebaugh was kind of going with that too. And so I'd like to walk through the building if that's possible, if it's something that we are truly, you know, really considering and looking at. But then also I need to probably understand if we're going to be talking about the city of Wichita's city hall. I mean, I need to go through that too. So I just would request at some point, if I can do that and, and kind of dive in deeper, I'd appreciate it.
We can absolutely set that up, Commissioner.
Certainly. Okay. Okay, Tanya, Commissioner Howes.
Just, just one more point. Again, we're talking about shared services. I think you start talking about things that the public has interface to. Many of these offices we're talking about today are, are administrative to the county government itself. There's not necessarily a connection to the public. And so in that regard, the public may not have a lot of knowledge about what we need. And again, I think that one of the greatest desires of the public is for us to be frugal with their money. Second of all, in terms of shared services, some of these offices we're housing in this space are very unique. Otherwise, they're already countywide services, like the county clerk, the county treasurer register of deeds, for example. And I think actually unless we wanted to combine, I can't even imagine how this would work, combine things like finance with Wichita. I, if we're going to have a separate finance department, there's not a shared service for the public to have a benefit. So again, that idea of, of shared services, I think gets into the other parts of government where, when we talk about 46 agencies. This, these are agencies of our government, but these are things I would say that don't necessarily offer a taxpayer saving necessarily to, to find shared services on this list of offices. We need, you know, if we had a combined HR, they would just have twice as much work. And I'm not sure that necessarily saves any money necessarily. But the county HR is, is very aware of our needs. And again, I'm not sure there's not some savings possible, but I don't know that that necessarily is going to deliver a better service to the community and a taxpayer savings to the community. So these things are unique in that I don't know they're, they're great offices necessarily for the idea of shared services specifically. But I can go outside this, these lists and I can find all kinds of opportunities. So again, when we, we have this discussion about what, what can we combine with other cities or, you know, other community services. I would probably look to the, a lot of the other things. We talked about, you know, parks and rec, for example. That would be something we, we probably should, that conversation probably should continue. But I don't know that this list necessarily really fits the, the description of shared services opportunities. Thank you.
Tanya, good job.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Tom?
Commissioners, a couple of years ago, the state of Kansas made some funding available to look at a very complex problem of serving the needs of individuals that experience an intellectual developmental disability and a mental health crisis. And so CGDO staff in the Department of Aging and Disabilities responded to that state RFP and got some funding so that we could start to explore some kind of solution in that regard. And so I've got Jeanette Livingston here today. She's the Deputy Director of CGDO Services. And we've got some folks from a consultant firm that are going to talk about one possible solution that we're looking at with, in partnership with the state of Kansas, so.
Very good. Hi, Jeanette, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having us on your agenda today. Those of you that joined us in our October meeting will remember that we did contract with the National Center for Start Services for an evaluation of mental health services, as Tim was saying. And they're here today to share the results of that evaluation. And little spoiler alert, I, we want to use the results of that evaluation to look at implementing the START evidence-based crisis prevention and intervention services here in Sedgwick County. We're not asking for additional county dollars. We have a state grant application on next week's commission meeting for approval. We'll use those grant dollars to initiate a START team through an RFP process to identify a vendor. But honestly, to build a sustainable system that will achieve the outcomes we need for this population will require more than an annual grant opportunity. And so we're going to use the evaluation to engage with our state stakeholders and system partners to look at a more long-term, sustainable system for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Because it's really a specialized mental health service, part of the mental health crisis, but a little bit more specialized. And I will call our START staff folks up here to go ahead and give you the results of our evaluation. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jeanette. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. I'm not used to standing still. I'm sorry. I'm Dr. Karen Weigley. I am the Acting Director at the National Center for START Services, which is out of the University of New Hampshire. So as, as was mentioned, we were invited here to do an evaluation of your mental health system, particularly around crisis prevention and intervention for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Do, would, would anyone like for me to define intellectual developmental disabilities? I think I will do that really quickly. So intellectual disability is somebody with intellectual and adaptive functioning that is a standard deviation below average functioning in, in society. So it can be, you know, IQ below 70. It also has to include adaptive behavior deficits. So not being able to maybe complete all kinds of daily living functions on your own independently. It also includes autism, specific genetic syndromes that are associated with developmental delays. So that's sort of the general population we are speaking about. And before we describe to you the results of the evaluation, I wanted to make sure that the commission understands a little bit more about the START model. So I know that three of you at least have, have heard about the START model. And a couple of you have been to some of our previous meetings and aware of what we're doing here. But I want to quickly overview it for others who may not be aware. So what, what we did, we were, this is sort of the process we've been going through since last summer. We were asked to come, look at the system, but also to find out, does it fit? Is your system a good fit, the existing care system, a good fit with the START model? So this is again, an evidence-based model of crisis intervention and prevention. We collected data from all across your county, got as many representatives as we could from a variety of stakeholders. Then we've written up the report, which will be available to you after, probably in about a week. We, we had a feedback session yesterday, so we incorporate any feedback from the community into our final report. So that will be available very shortly. And yes, yesterday we made the recommendations back to the community that indeed it looks like the START model is a really, really good fit for, for your community. And I just want to acknowledge all the work that your county has already done to provide really good and comprehensive mental health care and services for people with ADD. That doesn't always happen in every evaluation we conduct like this. So it was, it was quite nice to see what you guys have in place and all the progress you've made. Okay, so really quickly, just to mention that people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, which I will say ADD, I'm just going to call it that, have a much higher risk and rate of mental illness than the general population. So, I mean, according to research, depending on who you ask, it's anywhere from 7% of that population up to 97% of that population. That's quite a wide range, but we think it's probably around 35 to 40%, particularly if you're going to look at things like anxiety, depression and trauma-related disorders. So a lot of people in this community experience a lot of trauma. It, there's a lot of social contributors to this. So bullying, being marginalized, being left out of your community and isolated, not having meaningful work and giving meaningful contributions back to your community. We all, we're all here because we all like to do that clearly. And, and that is something that this population really does not have the opportunity to do. So that contributes to mental health conditions, as does a lot of times just genetic differences and syndromes. Okay, so what is START? It is an acronym for Systemic Therapeutic Assessment, Resources and Treatment. That's a mouthful. It's been around since 1988 and it has been evidence-based since then. So we have had a database, not that I was doing it in 1988, but that has existed since that point in time to look at what we're doing and what works and what doesn't work. So we're a continually evolving model that looks at all evidence and includes new things we learn from our partners as they learn from us and we continue to adapt. I will mention it was cited way back in 2002 by the U.S. Surgeon General as, as a model program, so. Just really quickly, this is a public health model. So yes, we do do tertiary care. So this is the model of tertiary care. There's primary intervention, secondary intervention, tertiary. If you think about primary, that's like, how do you know what diabetes is and what are risk factors? That's public health. People just know. We just know that. So one of the things that the START model aims to do is to help the community in general understand people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and mental health needs. Secondary intervention is like you go to your primary care or maybe a specialist to get services you need. The START model provides that type of care too, to people with ADD. And tertiary is crisis intervention. That's where you have the fewest options and the most expensive services. So we're going from cheapest to most expensive, really. Most cost-effective is up at the top. If we can prevent crises, mental health problems from occurring in the first place, we want to do that. And a lot of times when people are referred to START, they're down at the bottom of that. They are experiencing a lot of traumatic events and costing their communities a lot of money, to be honest. And not necessarily getting better. They're stuck in cycles down there. So when they're referred, that's where people are. Our job is to make sure that people go up back to primary intervention where their community and their system of care understands how to best support them and keep them stable in the community. Okay, so what are the services? This is a really, I'm just quickly going to run through what it is because it doesn't, it sounds a little, it sounds nebulous until you see it in action. So again, evidence-informed practice of 37 years. It's a national model. We have results everywhere from California to New York and in between. We have programs everywhere and we are continually evaluating their outcomes. And again, we're addressing a relatively small population of people, about 1%, 1 to 2%. If you include autism, it goes way up, but it can go up to what, 35%? Of the population or one in 35 people, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It, it is a small population, but it really does, when we do our cost evaluations, those few people cost the most for their communities. Okay, so what do START, what does a START team do? They coordinate services. They don't replace any existing services. They work with the service system that is in place to help everybody learn more and build their expertise around the mental health aspects of people with ADD. We need to understand what does depression look like for this person? And how does it present differently than it may in someone in your family that doesn't have an ADD? So that is part of it, getting that system of care to understand the person and through trial and error and continued work together, determining what works best to keep this person stable over time. It's very labor intensive. It takes a lot of expertise on a START team. Our center trains them, but you also have a psychiatrist. There is a psychologist needed on each team to help and to provide consultation as needed. Okay, the, the team members coach others how to use the techniques we know or have figured out work. Then that could be done with family members, direct support staff, physicians. A lot of times our physician consults with other physicians, those sort of things, 24-hour crisis response. So a resource center, I know that this is also something that a lot of people here would really like to have at some point. This is that place that's between you're at home living or you are in a hospital and we can't get you out. Or we get you out and you go home and things aren't going well, so you keep going back, right? This is the place where people can go instead of a hospital in some cases, or as a step down after a hospital. And it is therapeutically focused. People don't get stuck there. We have particular rules. We call you a guest. It's not a home. People don't want to stay because we do things like lock up refrigerators and things like that. So it is, it is a situation that is controlled. It is fun. People do tend to enjoy it and do very well there and they learn a lot about themselves. And we take that information back to their home and community. So everything that is learned there can be done anywhere. And, and again, including the family in every step of the way. The goal, one of the main goals of the START model is if somebody's with their family, we want them to stay with their family longer. People, we're all happier when we are, when we have family around. So that is a goal for everyone we serve. Okay. I think this pretty much just summarizes. This is FYI later, if you want to look at it. Just want to make sure you know, when we talk about our evidence base, we have our director back here of research and our evidence base, Anne Klein. SERS is our database. We now have over 15,000 people who have received services entered into this database, de-identified information, but we have information about what works and doesn't work and what we've provided and what we haven't provided. So we can look at our accountability to the community. Is what we're doing working? Is it effective for each person, but also overall? And is it cost-effective? And I can tell you, we, I, I think 2008, I published the first article on the cost savings of this model. And it was a quarter of the price of what people were spending the year before to support a person. And that was for a team. So now Dr. Renard Luke is going to describe for you some of the outcomes of our assessment from here in Sedgwick County to share that information. Right? Oh, no. Oh, no, I lied. Sorry. I forgot that we put this in here. Just to make it a little more real, this is an actual person who was served by a START program. And this person was a woman with moderate intellectual disabilities and she lived in a group home. She was enrolled in START in 2021 and she stayed in services for three and a half years. Average time that people stay in is about 18 months, but this person, as you can see, has quite a history. So at, at enrollment, why was she referred? Aggression, self-injury and a history of making accusations of people sexually assaulting her. Her diagnoses at that time were bipolar disorder and PTSD. The year before she was enrolled, she had 70 emergency department visits because of her mental health symptoms. That's a lot. That's more than one a week. And 50-plus psychiatric inpatient admissions. admissions. She was in this rotating door where she would come in and people would change her medications or give her more medication, send her home. Everybody knew her. Everybody was frustrated because they didn't know how to help her and how to stabilize her. So during her, her time with START, she got 70 plus hours of outreach. So we track also what our teams do. What does it take to support somebody like this? That means visits to the person in the community and their system of care, either educating, assessing, or trying different types of, of interventions with the person. That's what outreach means. Sick, more than six hours of clinical consultation and assessment. So that's the psychiatrist and psychologist who have spent time with this person as well and with their system of care, again, consulting with other people who serve this person. Ongoing crisis prevention and intervention planning. So that is the outcome of being in START is a really solid plan. It's almost like a contract that when I go into crisis, you know what to do and you agreed to do it. Somebody didn't say, well, guess what? Ms. Schmutz is going to come do this. No, you agreed. And everybody knows their role and everybody has agreed that I can do this and it is helpful. Right? So that's the outcome and we wait until people have been stable on that at least three months before they're unenrolled, disenrolled, whatever that is. We don't ever say discharged. So this person also got therapeutic coaching, 10 and a half hours. So sometimes if there's an emergency and we don't want to take the person out of their home and we don't want them to go to a resource center, we send coaches into the home to help stabilize that person. It's not just an immediate crisis response. It's let's spend time here every day for however long it takes to make sure we have figured out how to stabilize this person and coached somebody else how to do that in the home. She did have two inpatient stays for suicidal ideation. It's not that we don't want people to ever go to the hospital. We want them to go to the hospital when it's appropriate, right? And when they can actually get what they need there. So not because there's nowhere else to go. And that happens a lot in this population, an awful lot. People get stuck. And she did go to the emergency department twice. And that got her admitted. It was appropriate. So the START team helped to assess and say, yes, we need her to go to the ED so that they can do an admission. So that's an example of, of outcomes for this person. She's one example. Yes. Is she extreme? Yes. But I'm telling you everywhere we go, there's probably 20 people like her. You know, at the beginning, there's 20 people in one county that could look like this. And then over time, we continue to work with people who maybe aren't, don't have as extreme of a history, right? But then we get to the point where we're helping to also try to prevent that in the long run, years down the road. Okay. So if we're going to assume national average costs of services, the, the emergency department usage during the year prior to her being enrolled in START was about $182,000. And the inpatient stays were 105, oh, this is during START. I'm sorry. This, right? Sorry, Anne. Okay, yes. And inpatient stay, assuming that's one year instead of, you know, 50, that's 105,000 a year. And then the START team cost for three years for her, it's about 12,000 a person. We, we think that's what it would be here too, because that was Iowa, pretty close neighbor, similar cost of living, about 12,000 a year is what it costs to serve this person in START. So the savings were over 200,000 in that three year period, just for one person. And maybe even more given how many times she was in that emergency department. Okay. Now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Renard to talk about Sedgwick County's evaluation results.
Thank you, Dr. Renard. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. So like Karen said, my name's Luke Renard. I also work for UNH, but fun fact, I was actually born in Manhattan. My dad served at Fort Riley and my sister lives in Goddard. So I had a interesting conversation last night about property taxes. So I'm a little, yeah, I'm a little tuned in to your local community now.
Welcome to our world.
So I'm going to just briefly, I'll go through the results of what we found from your constituents, from your residents here, from your, your providers and actual people receiving services. Let's start with the, the good things here. So the three of us have done this for quite a while. We've done this in dozens of communities and the things we found in Sedgwick County are really positive. I think people appreciate the hard work that goes into trying to support this population. And like Karen said, this is a very small subset. So you were talking 1% of a national population, but they actually use a disproportionate amount of services. So you have 1% of people actually using about 19% of all your Medicaid dollars. So it is few people, but we're talking about a lot of money.
Can you say that number one more time? Forgive me.
Yeah. So about 1% of the population, right, has an intellectual disability or autism, and they actually use about 19% of Medicaid resources. Yep. And, and that includes acute care services, medical services, but also waiver services. And that's the national data. I don't, I'm assuming it's probably holds fairly true in Sedgwick County, but we'd have to dive into that a little bit more. All that, just to highlight the importance of few people cost a lot of money and we can do things better. So what we, thematically, what we found talking to, to some of the residents here, there are mental health services that are available. There are crisis response services. The, the challenge is they're not necessarily tailored to this very specific subset. So you lack the expertise and people get less than optimum care. So they, you know, Karen talked about that revolving door services. That's what you see when people don't get the right care at the right time. There's a very positive reflection of law enforcement in this community, which I think is a really good testament to all the hard work that's been done. We don't see that everywhere. So police are looked at very favorably here. The CIT training that is pretty widespread is well received. You do have the crisis intervention services. Again, the comments related to that is they're just not specific enough for this population. So they're not always as effective as they could be. We get a lot of good feedback about the hard work providers do about CDDO. They're, they're very, very positively looked at. And I think everyone's working really hard and they're doing the best they can with the resources they have available. We're kind of diving into some of the, the costs that are, that are driving, kind of driving up the utilization. There's really three big things that we found. Again, not, not unique to Sedgwick County. We see this quite a bit. You have a, a high rate of psychiatric hospitalizations and it's because there's a lack of other options. If people need to go to the hospital, they should go to the hospital, but you shouldn't go to the hospital because there's not a better way to care for people. Your ER visits are typically pretty high because of lack of other options. That clogs up your ERs, it takes up your dock time, your police and your ambulance are transporting these people. If you're in a mental health crisis, there are other ways to address that sometimes. It's not always the ER. It's not always police intervention. And then you have actually a fairly high rate of psychotropic drugs. So if we were to go to the doctor, right? So I, I go to my doctor for depression, he gives me a pill, but then he says, also go, go see some therapist, right? So you pair it with other treatment modalities. If there's not another treatment, you tend to get more pills. So just for your Medicaid population, you're spending over 5 million a year just in psychotropic meds. So what we would see, what we would anticipate is probably a lower cost there because you're pairing it with more expertise in the community around other therapeutic interventions. And again, these are, these are pulled directly from the, the formal report that we submitted to Jeanette. Again, more, more themes. What we see is a lot of reactive services. There's not a lot of that, that primary, you know, where you're doing the proactive work. So you're not putting systems in place to address things before they get a little bit out of hand. There's an over reliance on your police and your EDs. I think your sheriff would probably echo that statement. I'm sure you're, you know, even Wichita Police. This is not how they want to spend their time either. But if there's a lack of other options, who do we call? We always call the police, right? Again, you know, you have your repeat ED visits, hospital admissions. Again, we want people to go to hospital if you need to go to hospital. What we don't want is people going every week. That's, that's not a good way to treat people. You don't get better that way. And it's, it's really due to a lack of alternatives. And then crisis responders, we just talked about it. They, the CIT training is great, but again, this is a very unique subset of the population and they just don't have that kind of expertise or training. Just again, some national data that we wanted to share. So again, we have dozens of these programs across the nation. You can see just, just some reduction in services. So you have your psychiatric hospitalization is the blue line. The ED visits are your orange line and you can see after, so we, we measure things. We're, we're a very data-driven program. So prior to enrollment, what's your rate of, of utilization for these services? And then we measure one year later. So you're seeing the reduction in costs, you know, times that by X people by per cost visit. Nationally, what we found is that a year in START is typically cheaper than an inpatient admission at a, a one week stay at a psychiatric institute. So potential cost savings, one of the, one of the things we, that kind of jumped out from the data we collected here is your recidivism rate. So you do have people revisiting your ER. You have people going back to the hospital over and over. We found that of your about 35 people that tend to be your, your over utilizers, their recidivism rate is quite high. So again, this is your data compared to what we see nationally for other programs. So, but those, that small group of people, those 34, I bet your hospital CEO knows them. I mean, we, you, you know those names. Just some other, some other things that we collected. I would say of note, so the, the, the large column on your left is left at location. So one of the things we track is if someone has a mental health crisis and they need help, right? So they, let's say they, they call the police, right? So the blue bar is your Sedgwick County police call. So about 66% of the time, the police go out and they leave that person at the setting. That means the others, the other percentage of the time they're going to jail, they're going to the hospital, they're going to somewhere else. They're not staying at the home or the group home where the call is. What you see on the, the, the red bar is people who enrolled in START, over 80% get to the intervention, the team responds, they get to stay in their home. If you're in a mental health crisis, jail is not the right place for you. I think we would all agree with that. So that's, that's a big effect that we see. And then I know the, the lines are small, but if you look over at the arrested in jail and you can see it in your, your handout, you have about a 7%. So 7% of these calls, these people wind up in jail. Our START programs across the country, the, the little red bar you can barely see, that's less than 1%. So you have less people with ADDMH going to jail. So they get more effective treatment and they get to stay in their homes longer. So one of the things that, again, jumped out from some of the constituents that we talked to had to do with the need for that step down unit. So we talked about the resource center. So a therapeutic intervention between your more costly institutional care and, you know, a home. So when we work with communities that have a clinical team plus a resource center, within a year to 18 months, you see big decreases in your ER service utilization. Again, in your jail, less than 1%. And then your police response. So your team would work with all those three entities. So when they do work, they're more effective. But what you really want is that reduce the reliance on those so they can do their, so they can do their job, right? So let's not use their time frivolously. We also know that communities with START teams, they stay with their families longer. So they use less, you know, less intensive group home or other institutional care. Their quality of life measures go, go way up. People are much more satisfied. So are families. And then there's a lot of training and non-face-to-face work that these teams do. So when someone is having a crisis, you see a whole lot less of the, well, let's just add a staff person, you know, up staffing, right? So two staff to one person, not an effective way to, to operate, right? I know that, that was very brief, so I want to be respectful of time. And again, all the results are in the full report, but we would be glad to answer any questions.
Well, thank you so much for the report and all the work. And Jeanette, thank you for all the work, your team, everyone, all that you've done to get us to this point. I'll have a few questions, but I want to open up for the rest of the commission first. Questions or comments? Mention her house.
Thank you. This is probably for Dr. Renard. You mentioned the cost review for the psychotropic drug prescriptions. At $5 million, was that a Sedgwick County number?
It's a Sedgwick County number and it's just based on Medicaid claims. So this isn't your private insurance or non, non-insured population. This is just your Medicaid claims data.
Okay.
And that's 2023 numbers, by the way.
I see that this, this START program, I guess, is in a number of states and it's been going on since about 2011. In those other states, well, let me ask it. First of all, I also saw there was a interim committee, joint committee of the legislature that had this topic in front of them. Is there some kind of state law that needed to happen? Did they do something legislatively to address the topic today based on their discussion?
I, I spoke with them. They were looking at the possibility of legislating START services statewide and, and developing, you know, if you, if you legislate that it has to be available and other states have done this, then they find a way to fund it long-term. Determining how to do that, they, they figured that out. So they asked me to come to that committee to talk about cost savings and, and what they might do next. I don't know. I wasn't available to listen to them. You know, it wasn't possible for me to hear the outcome. And Jeanette knows, you know?
I know there, it was information for the state. They did not take action on it, but.
Okay. And, and I understand there's a, a grant opportunity here. What's the amount of that grant?
A couple of years ago, the state legislature authorized $2 million statewide for ADD crisis mental health services. So that's a statewide amount.
So it's not targeted towards the START program?
No.
Okay. So START program happening anywhere in Kansas at this time?
No.
Our, our award of that 2 million, we got a portion of that 2 million dollars and that, and our application was to bring the START team in and have them do the assessment and help us figure out how we would be able to implement it. I think the state sees Sedgwick County as an opportunity to pilot this particular approach. Again, there were, I think, four other awards across the state. So there are other things that are being tested. This is one of those things where you, you test a number of different interventions to see what works best and then hopefully figure out what you can do statewide.
So the, the state dollars that are, that are earmarked for this purpose, are they, is that federal pass through? Is that state, state revenue?
State general fund.
Okay. And then the other 15 states that are doing the START program today, are they, are they government, but government centered, if you will, programs or are they private sector?
They're a mixture of both. More are private sector. So typically the, it's been successful both ways, but the trend recently has been where, you know, CDDO would, would bring the program in, RFP it out to a private provider. And then, you know, there'd be a partnership and a little bit of oversight, but it tends to be private, private operators running the team.
You talked about efficiencies. Does, does this START program, does it displace any current ID, ADD programming that currently have, this is in addition to, it's not displacing?
This is, it's in addition to, so this, this is, we don't replace, we don't supplant. This is a, a shorter term intervention. So we may involve, be involved with the client for 18 months, two years. And as the client gets better and more stable, as the system better supports this person, we slowly fade out. So it's about raising capacity, rising tide kind of approach.
And, and I, I might mention, I don't know if Kansas is unique in this, but we do have a uniform access standard in our regs related to folks with intellectual developmental disabilities. And so that means that providers cannot discriminate based on a person's disability. So they can't say this person's hard to serve. I'm not going to serve them anymore. They're still required to serve. It's sort of setting them up to fail with not having specialized mental health services to provide that support. They may be experts in providing intellectual development disability supports, but the mental health is more specialized. And so there's, there's that gap. We have a reg that, you know, it's a great reg that allows people to stay in the community, but without those specialized services, our providers are really struggling to, to address this. struggling to, to address this population.
And then finally, I'll probably wrap my last question, Chairman, if that's okay. I see that Kansas Health Institute, I guess, has been, has been, I guess, leading on this topic in Kansas. Is that right?
Is that the program at KU?
No, it's across the street over there.
No, I, I need to connect with them because I, I saw something on their website the other day. No, it, it, they have not been involved, to my knowledge, but I know that they did have something on start on their, their website.
I'll just say this. Again, the program sounds like it is, you know, effective program. But I am, I am, and I, and I'm glad that there's people trying to figure out how to do things better. And it's a very difficult population to serve. There's a very, you know, it's a lot of challenge, I think, for everyone, everyone involved to know what's best for the clients that are getting services. And so it, it is a great discussion. But I would just say, you know, we're, I don't know what, what the vision is for, where, where, does anybody have a vision in terms of what are we trying to do in Kansas? What, what do we see ourselves five or 10 years from now in relation to this program? Is this something that's going to be, is there an attempt to get this going in Kansas? And what's the funding model look like? I guess I'd like to know where this is headed.
I, I know start staff have talked to state officials and it is something that they're interested in. But we do need to have those conversations with our state partners about what does this look like? And what is this, how, how are we going to structure it so that it's sustainable? And they have some great models in other states that either, you know, either rely on Medicaid or grants or managed care companies. So I know the state's interested and have spoken to start about that.
Yeah. So the state of Kansas and Kdad's in particular has been in touch with us for five, six years, I guess. And we've presented to them multiple times. And there is Interhab. I don't know if you know who that is. Interhab, we have spoken with multiple times. Johnson County has called and said, we want start. There's different pockets and people who are looking at this. And I know from my understanding, Kdad's has just been looking at, how do we do this statewide? And again, as, as you mentioned, they, they kind of thought, then these guys, you guys jumped in, a CDDO did, and said, let's look at this more closely and stop talking about it. And then Kdad's has then said, oh, well, this will be a great pilot to see what we can do elsewhere. So that has been our ongoing conversation with them.
Okay, very good. Okay, I got a few questions. Jeanette and Tim, this might be kind of directed your way. But can you help practically, how do we implement a start model? Are they embedding their staff into our CDDO? Are they training on a curriculum or a practicum? Or specifically, what does this look like?
One of the best things about start is that, you know, one, it's evidence-based, but two, it's also structured for the community based on what the community's assets are. And so our plan is, and I don't have it, all the details worked out in my head yet, but we have a call with Ohio on Thursday to talk about how they started up their start team. But the plan is to do an RFP to identify a vendor. And the vendor will begin hiring staff that will work, will contract with the National Center for Start Services. And they will work with that vendor as they build up the team. And as they're being trained, they're also providing the services simultaneously.
I see.
The goal would be that they'll, they'll be able also to bill Medicaid, presumably mental health services for these. So hopefully our grants, you know, as they develop, the amount of grant money will go down as the revenue increases that they're able to build down.
Okay. Obviously, what's unique about the county is that we have the CDDO and the network of CDO. We also have Calm Care, a CCDHC. What is the overlap? How do they, how do these overlap? We're talking about dual diagnosed individuals with IDD and mental health disorder. How do these, we're touching two different departments here at the county. How do they interrelate with each other?
Well, our Calm Care Crisis Service has been very involved. As we've looked at this, they've participated in the survey and they've been a part of our advisory board on this. We've, they've done a lot of training in the start model as well to try to, to skill up to better serve this population. Tim, I don't know if you want to add?
Yeah, I think that's one of the biggest benefits is that they talked a little bit about when they come into a community, they start to educate, educate the entire community. Our crisis stat, staff at Calm Care could be part of that education as well. They don't necessarily have to be the respondent. We could probably theoretically submit a response to the RFP that CEO puts out from Calm Care. But it's just as likely that there are private providers in the community that say, that's training and, and approach that we want for our staff as well.
On our CDO network, but I'm thinking mobile mental health response. We're, we're scaling up the mobile mental health response to such an extent that they're going to have to be in tune with some of these practices.
And I think this, having a start team in the community to consult with other providers, whether they work for Calm Care or anywhere else, is really going to benefit that. And then the mobile response is going to be much improved as well.
Just a comment, a couple more questions, and we'll wrap it up. But I became aware of what I called this an impossible, an impossible problem a couple of years ago. When I first got on the commission, started to learn, and it came from, I was one month on the commission and I was touring Starkey, one of our CDDO network partners, wonderful partner in this community. And I began to ask him about their challenges and barriers. And the biggest issue he raised was the growing subset of his population, of his client population that is dual diagnosed. And he says, you know, we do IDD. If there's a mental health crisis in one of our group homes, you know, we would call Calm Care. Calm Care would do the best they can. This is what they specialize in mental health, but they don't do IDD. And we're all sitting here saying, who does what? Like, we don't know how to treat effectively and efficiently this population. And what he mentioned to me, what I thought was the impossible problem, is that, he says, we want to keep these people in our group homes, but there's times they just need crisis stabilization, 72 hours of some sort. They just need stabilization from professionals. And we began to talk about that, what you mentioned, a resource center, a four-bed resource center. About a week after that, we had a meeting, we're getting ready to open up tomorrow, ground break on a mental health hospital here, 104 beds. And I asked, is there a way that we can carve off four beds for this specific purpose? It just made sense. There's a $100 million investment coming into this community. We couldn't carve off four beds in a hospital that's being built for high utilizers. And that's not an option. So I guess my question now is, I think that resource center, particularly for those in our CDDO network, is a really an important piece of the puzzle, the crisis stabilization. Have there been any progress or any discussions about what that looks like and who, what, who we could partner with in something of that sort?
Well, I've met with two of the three managed care companies so far, and everyone's supportive. And, and they see the need to. They're the ones paying for those hospital stays. We had an individual 100, it was over 160-day hospital stay at Via Christie. We've had, you know, folks in and out of the jail. We had over 800 police calls to IDD facilities in one year. So we, we see that gap. And managed care companies are, you know, see that as well. No one, they were willing to come to the table. They're going to kind of look to the state for leadership. And so we, our plan is to start engaging with Kdad's and KDHE to see what that could look like. I really feel like the resource center could be a regional asset. And we have way too many people that move here because there's not services other places where they might need, they could have that crisis stabilization here. Yeah, train the staff back home. And they can go back home where their family and their friends live instead of moving here.
Tim, we've talked about this a lot.
Yeah. One of the challenges, one of, one of the biggest benefactors, other than the consumers receiving the, the services, is the state and the pressure that they have on Parsons State Hospital. So there's one, really one state hospital for them. They have, what we understand are some beds set aside for crisis resolution. They can't staff them. And so, and one of the reasons they can't staff them is because providing mental health services that people experience in IDD, very complex. It's a really small number of providers. And so one of the hopes is with the start model, we'll be able to expand the number of providers that are comfortable delivering services to that population. And whether that happens here in the community, which would be our preference, or at Parsons even.
Here, I might put you on the spot, Tim, but I mean, Parsons is, they're having a hard time in Parsons. This is where these services are conducted. We're breaking ground on a hospital tomorrow. Is it, is that conversation dead to carve off four beds, about 104 beds to mixed-use state hospitals for, is that a dead conversation? Or is it worth some nudging?
I think it's one that we need to continue to have. The fact that there was a, a special hearing this session to talk about this particular topic indicates that the state, and the fact that the state's made this grant money available, indicates that they're trying to help identify some kind of a solution. I agree with you. It seems like we've got a solution that's going to get built.
Okay. Well, let's continue to chat on that discussion. I think it's, it's worthy. I'm almost done. I'm sorry. Do we have any sort of report on high utilizers? We, we ran a report a few years ago about those that are suffering with high utilizers and substance use and mental health and what that reported. And then it was hundreds of millions of dollars. Do we have any high utilizer data that is more specific for Sedgwick County and this dual diagnosed? Because I'm seeing some numbers here that are quite remarkable. I'm just curious if we have anything more specific.
The, the evaluation used Medicaid dollars for individuals in services. So we have about 2,400 people in Sedgwick County eligible for the system. About 1,000 of those are on the waitlist. And so the, but the numbers we could pull from Medicaid were specifically those receiving services. So with that $5 million on psychotropic meds, that was just the population that are in services. It doesn't include the folks that are on the waitlist. And so we, we know the numbers we do have in the evaluation are an undercount. But it gives you an idea of how expensive they are.
Yeah. Well, I'm just trying to find return on investment to the community as we start talking about investments. I, I'm a believer, based on the limited information I have, that meeting this gap will reduce costs to the community and our hospitals and our providers. I, I'm almost convinced of it, but it'd be nice to have some hard data to, to tell our constituents why this investment matters. Last question, you had mentioned the IDV Advisory Board. It's an advisory board that we all make appointments to. Are they in the loop of these conversations? Are they very much aware?
Yes, yes. And we, we have an advisory board specific to this project, as well as the, the Intellectual Developmental Disability Advisory Board.
Jeanette, thank you and all your team. CDDO, thank you for all the work you guys are doing on this. I do think this is an opportunity for Sedgwick County to lead and to help advise the state on what could be here. Appreciate start services and all the things you guys are doing across the country, but specifically your interest here. So I'm encouraged about what we're hearing today. Is there an ask of some sort? Or are we just kind of wait and see? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom, anything else? That's it. Okay, tomorrow morning, just a reminder, we're starting at 8:30 AM tomorrow morning. And it's because we're groundbreaking the, the hospital, the health hospital at noon. Governor will be here, Kdad's secretary will be here. It'll be a fun day. So 8:30 AM tomorrow morning. See you then.